I had six thirty to call the meeting to order. If you would. If you would, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dave.
Almighty and your highest seventy five, we really want for new blessings to be bestowed upon each and every one of us. Father God, I ask you to be with us in this meeting. Help us to do the things that's right and pleasing in thy sight and for the benefit of the town of Silver City. For it leaves no other blessings, I ask in his name.
And if you will, run me and believe believing. I would be certified by the United States of America. And typically by law for which it stands, one patient under God, I do this. With the petition justice for all. Yes. Make him pray if he would, recite the Silver City mission.
This citation of the Silver City mission statement is to advance a framework of success. And balance governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairley, if you would, would you recite the Silver City vision statement?
Silver City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
All right, thank you. All right, adjustments to the agenda.
There are no adjustments to the agenda tonight. Only, only noting that there is supplementary information with the application. Or the planning board already noted in the agenda, the five point two at your table.
At this, at this point, I'd like to add some adjustments to the agenda or suggestions. First of all, under new business, big five is one. I would ask that that be tabled for the meet for the next meeting in December. We didn't get to pack it late Friday. Got any chance to do due diligence to it? Had that chance to look over it. We got a new board coming in, they need to be aware of it, I'd like to table that. Have it brought up at the first meeting in December. Second thing is, I'd like to add a closing session in.
I make a motion and we approve the agenda as presented in our packet.
Second.
All right, so I'm gonna say if you were, so we go specifically on all the questions. I got, if I call the question.
You can call the question.
So in other words, we just wanna go right ahead and approve all of it without any due diligence, no doubt. But that, all right. All of the favor of the vote, say aye. All of the votes, like, sign.
Commissioner Austin, what was your vote? Yeah, your name?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All of the favors, say aye. All of the votes, like, sign. And a motion, yes.
Motion to approve your consent agenda.
That could just did.
I was on the agenda.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Jay Sharp to do a presentation on the fiscal year 2021 audit from the Sharp retail audit firm.
I don't know if our Zoom is working right.
We tested it earlier and everyone can hear it.
We've got two people in the waiting room.
Waiting on the audit to come through the PowerPoint, going through the whiteboard. Just a second. Yeah, or maybe their flash drive, we put it on. You ready?
Great. Cool. Good evening, my name's Jay Sharp, I'm the audit attorney in charge of the town audit to begin June thirty of two thousand twenty one. I'm here to present that audit. So first off, talk about the status of the audit. Fieldwork has been completed. Financial statements have been prepared. And the audit was submitted to the local governor commission last week. So we're waiting for their approval before we issue the two thousand twenty one audit. A little bit of background on the rules and objectives of the auditor before we get into the results of the audit. We don't just start crunching numbers as they say. We plan out the audit. And what we do here is, this is our first year doing the audit for the town. We get an understanding of internal controls in place. We may test some of those controls. For two thousand twenty one, we tested controls over cash disbursements, payroll, credit cards. And we do this because we have what we call a risk-based audit approach. What we're doing is assessing risks to all the significant financial reporting areas the town has. For example, cash, revenues, expenses. We're going to concentrate our audit efforts on the higher risk areas. We aren't going to look at every significant financial report the town does have. And we do this because we have to obtain what we consider the sufficient audit evidence to render an opinion on the financial statements. And that is why your higher risk is to give an opinion on the financial statements. That opinion concentrates on whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And that's the reasonable assurance. So the results for the two thousand twenty one audit. I don't think we've been here in two thousand twenty three discovering the timing of the audit, we're not on track. The audit is due to the LGC October thirty first of every year. And like I said, we just submitted that audit last week. The audit opinion I was just talking about, the town did receive what we call an unmodified opinion of the financial statement for two thousand twenty one. That is a clean opinion, so that's good news there for the town. However, we did have two findings, both of them considered material weaknesses during the two thousand twenty one audit. These were repeat findings from two thousand twenty. First one was internal controls over financial reporting. And the other one was segregation of duties. Because of the lack of, because of the issues with both of those, the audit was not, we were not able to complete that audit on a timely manner. And so those are two repeat findings from two thousand twenty for two thousand twenty one. There are several degrees of findings. Two that are reportable on financial statements are significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. Material weaknesses being a higher degree of a finding. What that basically means are there are conditions in place, or possible condition in place that will lead to financial statements.
How do I make this better?
Twenty one, as a result of our audit procedures, we did have material adjustments. We had over a dozen adjustments that had to be made in order to make the financial statements materially correct. The totality of those adjustments were in the range of about five million dollars. Thus leading to. With the finding of the report. Additional communication we're required to have in addition to the audit before taking questions. There's a separate letter card communications letter, and there's four main talking points with this letter. First of all, if there's any major accounting policy changes that affect the notes of the financial statement, we're required to let you know about those. Two thousand twenty one, there were not. Two thousand twenty two, there's gonna be a major roof standard that did come into place. If you have any leases, it's gonna be a different way for accounting for those, so after that, for the two thousand twenty two. During our procedures, there are some numbers, there are hard and fast numbers. There are some numbers developed based on estimates. Are we paying close attention to any estimates that the town has? Two major estimates y'all have are the depreciable lives of your capital assets and the allowance for doubtful accounts. There is, those estimates appear reasonable, no issues there. Happy report, there's no disagreements of management. However, there were significant difficulties encountered during the audit proceedings that led to the delay completion of the audit. As auditors, we have to gain what we call substantial audit evidence. We were unable to do that until recently, and that's why there was a delay in the audit, and that's why it was filed late. With that, I'll be glad to take any questions you may have on the results of the audit or the audit proceedings for two thousand twenty one.
Can you go in any more detail about, you know, there was a difficult, as you said, but there was a total of five million dollars. Was that all about?
Yes, so, you know, we're engaged to do the twenty one audit. The twenty audit was already late. It's already been turned in late, so obviously we're already behind, starting the audit process. During the audit process, which we started in about January two thousand twenty two. During that timeframe until last week, there were three different finance officers in that position. That led to obviously difficulties getting the information in order to complete the audit. We noted bank reconciliations were not being performed on a timely basis. We had, you know, an issue getting that. That was one of the things that led to the delay was not, was not getting correctly reconciled. Bank statements, there's also some issues with the due to, due from fund between your proprietary funds and your general fund, which were filed a couple weeks ago. That, and there was the software implementation back in two thousand twenty. That, and that's kind of a combination, a perfect storm, as you might say, that created the delays in the audit. Most of the adjustments you were asking about, a lot of those had to do with the accrual process. Whether accruing more expenditures or accruing more revenues. There were receivables and payables that were not on the books at year end when we received the original trial balance. There's some other issues, like I said, correcting cash, correcting due to, due from, and recording some of the pension issues that occur at the end of the year. So that was, the majority of our, of our adjustments had to do with those issues.
So question, with regard to the segregation of duties and such, the material findings that you discovered. I know we had that in twenty, and I think we had it in nineteen and probably eighteen as well. Do you often see that in, in small, in towns with very small finance departments?
Yes, unfortunately, we, we see that a lot, we work with a lot of smaller towns, we see that a lot. I think it's gonna be a continuing problem with small towns in North Carolina, just because it's hard to find folks in, in the accounting department, specifically finance officers. But, you know, as I said, there could be ways to be worked around that.
Yeah, but it's not unique to us.
No, it's not unique. I will say the material weakness is unique, we usually see as a significant deficiency. But because no corrections were made during two thousand twenty, it continued to be a material weakness.
In, you know, now to go through this process and everything. Are there any recommendations from the firm to things we could be doing differently or better, or, you know, now that you've seen into it?
Obviously, number one is to make sure that banks' statements are being reconciled, you know, on a timely, efficient basis. All, all bank statements that are not, and you should be reconciled within the first week after, after month end. Once you receive those statements, of course, a lot, you know, a lot of information you can see online now, you don't even have to wait till the statements. But those need to be reconciled quickly after month end. That was one of our biggest issues, is not being able to get reconciled bank statements. Paying attention to the due to, due from. Obviously, accounts are set up where one fund may owe another. Making sure those are netting out to zero, because obviously, one can't owe more than the other is gonna receive. And pay attention to the transfer process to make sure, you know, the transfer from netting out to zero between funds. You know, I think, you know, obviously, a key piece is having a good finance officer that's gonna stay, not a turnover of position. Obviously, can always be helped, but, you know, that, that created a lot of issues we were running into because of turnover in the finance officer positions.
Okay, you'll, you'll turn that in as a written, that'd be part of our recommendations.
Yes, we'll get right to it.
Any other questions? All right, I recommend that is it, thank you very much. All right, Nick, I'll be, I'm on charter amendment.
Well, this is a, will be the culmination of this process that we, that we, that we've done, redone. It's a, the board is submitting the charter subject to vote of the citizens. And that should be considered first by the board. But you don't need the resolution calling for the referendum unless you actually adopt the ordinance. So it makes more sense to do the ordinance and then do the resolution, to consider it in that order.
And then do the public notice.
The public notice is, I guess, in informational purposes, but if the ordinance and the resolution are both adopted in this public notice, it would be published pursuant to statute.
Do it in number one.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Number two, then number one?
Yeah, the, the ordinance first and then the resolution.
I make a motion that we approve an ordinance, the new charter of the town of Silver City to increase its term to two to three years. By the qualified voters of the town of Silver City at the primary election on March fifth, two thousand twenty four.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second, any questions? I mean. Any none, all of the favor say aye. All of the votes, like, sign. Motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the resolution calling for a referendum for the purpose of the charter amendment question. For the mayor's term at the primary election to be held March fifth, twenty twenty four.
Second. All right, got a motion, second, any questions? Come on in. Any none, and all of those in favor say aye. Right, sign. And a motion carries. And before we get off of this, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the motion, if we do it. But I noticed on here that they're gonna have the election again at the National Guard Armory. And yeah, there's some issues with having none of it, it gets dark. It got dark at five o'clock, you couldn't see a lot of stuff like that. We need to, we need to make some kind of contact with the election board, they may already have done that. But there was also some issues with where people were supposed to go. The information of where your polling place was evidently was all fouled up. Those two pieces, those pieces of information need to get to the election.
And also, there was no one watching, like, people were coming up who needed to vote from the car, curbside voting. There was no one watching that either.
That's, that's disappointing, but obviously, elections are a county operation, it's not something the town is directly involved in. I know they perceive a lot of complaints about the election in Silver City. The lighting at the armory was a problem. People didn't know where to vote, the curbside was a complaint, so it's. And, and the fact that Braxton Gym was confusing, we did post a notice at the gym, but a lot of people thought they were going to vote there. Instead of, instead of the armory or the senior center, so we're gonna try and address all those. I, I imagine they're using the same locations in, in March again, but we'll certainly try to see that they're made aware of the issues that we have, and hoping they'll address it.
It's just a danger.
It is, it is. And I was, you know, I saw how dark it was getting at the armory, you know, someone could have been hit by a car.
No external lights.
There's a lot of issues there.
Yeah.
A man was at the Wiss Chatham voting place up there, the senior citizens, and he said he was on the board of the elections. And we were talking about the confusion, people didn't know where to go to vote, and he said he was told that everyone got in the mail. Something to tell them where to vote. And we said, no. But if we send that out, it's on that. He was told that, and we said, no, no one we knew.
That's not, that's not wrong. So maybe if we, you know, we just talk about it, maybe we make some kind of official letter or something, something like. So we have something hard copy to back it up with, you know, but that might get a little bit farther, I doubt it, but. Rather than just telling them, they'll forget about that. I think now's the time when they're making plans and what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it, so. Anything else? Man. Okay. Moving on. Five point two, planning board.
Some, mayor commissioners, before we deny, is one applicant for, if they could see on the planning board, for a city limits member position. If this is, and you have the application of the applicant that you table tonight. If this is approved tonight, there would still remain one city limit alternate and one city limit position upon Mr. Travis Patterson, assuming role commissioner December the fourth.
I can motion and approve Mr. Christopher Wilson for the spot on.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any questions? Any none, all of the favor say aye. All of the opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Yes. Hey, you be, take sound for one.
So before everyone tonight is a resolution as well as the management agreement with the city of Sanford regarding utilities. And I wanna make sure I introduce Mr. Bob Hagman, Hornsboro, Walburn. And he helps assist us as the attorney in negotiations in our conversations with the city of Sanford. I, I was back up and give a quick summary of what we're looking at tonight. The state of North Carolina and, and its budget, its battalion budget, approved seventy-five billion, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the town of Silver City. With a few conditions. Obviously, the money all has to go towards water and sewer projects. There was a specific provision outlined in the budget that only fifteen percent of the funds could be used for permitting project design and engineering. The other eighty-five percent could not be unlocked until the agreement before you tonight was approved with Sanford. It, it's, it's requiring an agreement with Sanford to move forward with management. The seventy-five million dollars would be specifically allocated to paying for the full cost of wastewater treatment plant upgrade from four billion gallons per day to six billion gallons per day. The management agreement itself does a few things. It allows the city of Sanford to provide consulting services with us and exercise authority to help us get that plant upgraded. The agreement can be terminated with an eighty-five day notice once all the seventy-five million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar funds is expended. So we, we'd be in agreement with them until that's completed. For any funds beyond the funds we expect it will take to upgrade the plant, because we haven't bid it yet. Will be agreed upon jointly between Silver City and Sanford for what those water and sewer projects would be. We are unable to award the project because we cannot perform a free audit financially until the funds are unlocked. So we're at a standstill with upgrading the plant until this agreement is done. I know there have been a lot of conversations about, about this agreement and what it is and what it isn't. This is not before you tonight to turn utilities over to the city of Sanford. That's a merger agreement, that's a conversation for another day down the road. Tonight, we're talking about a management agreement. And that is gonna cover the wastewater plant upgrade, consulting services through that process, and identifying other projects during that timeline. We cannot move forward with the upgrade until we approve this before you tonight. And we've had months of negotiations with, with Sanford, along with our consultants, some of the individuals in, in this room tonight. Committing to approving this tonight, November twenty. City of Sanford is also taking up a comparable agreement this week as well, so that we can immediately start the process of bidding this project. DQ is currently reviewing this language, we have not heard back from them, but we're ready to move forward, assuming that they accept it. We're not aware of any deficiencies there, we're expecting that to go through. And I'm happy to answer any questions about this agreement that you may have.
All right.
Yes, sir.
If you approve this, are we obligated to the second part?
No. I would say, based on the language we have here, no. Because this is just required to unlock the money to the plant upgrade. What, what we're committed to is we have to stay in this agreement until all the funding is expended.
Okay. Reason I'm asking, I've had people request from me that we have public input on all this. Public input sessions.
Right.
And we got two new board members and a new mayor coming on. And I just, I wasn't sure about that.
The town, as you know, as you know, Commissioner Brown, the town only has very limited options before us.
I understand.
The option is, we move forward with this agreement and accept the state's money, move in that direction. Or the town of Silver City, which is already committed to upgrading the plant from four MGD to six MGD, is deciding to take on tens of millions of dollars in debt. And pass that on to the water and sewer customers of Silver City. So, based on that, without throwing a hard nut. So, based on that, without throwing a hard number out there, I did a rough calculation today to say, if we financed this, what would that look like? It would be about two point six million dollars in principal and interest payments for the next forty years. And, and for a rough comparison, we generated one point seven million dollars in additional revenue from the recent water sewer increases. So, so it'll be an additional two point six. So, we, you know, the, the way this was set up, which is the language the state gave us in the budget. We cannot move forward without either borrowing the money, uh, for the plant upgrade or accepting the state's concept, uh, conditions with Sanford, so that we can bid and award the project. And we already have a timeline we have to meet based on the agreement, and the incentive agreement we have with, with Wolf Speed.
So, when the, when the second part of this comes along to go with Sanford, the new board will be here.
Yes. That's correct.
I just don't wanna leave them out, because they're getting ready to step in.
And to follow up on Mr. Brown's question. One of the things we've said all along, because we're gonna have full transparency. And then we were gonna have a public hearing, a public comment to present this to the citizens of Sauer City, because it's gonna affect each and every citizen. And I don't see that we're having a public hearing, and I don't see any public comment, so where did that go? I mean, was that just idle talk that we had, or what?
We talked about having the public input for a, a potential merger agreement, not, not the management agreement. The management agreement had, had to be done in order to get the seventy-five million dollars, and we're on a very short timeframe, because we had to have, we had to have this management agreement done within ninety days of the budget.
So, too.
And you, and you know that, and you know that, because we, we've had the stakeholder meetings that said that.
So, in other words, if, to have a public hearing, all you gotta do is advertise.
You don't have public hearings on contracts.
And we're gonna, two weeks is gonna kill the whole project, so we can just push it through and not let the citizens be aware of what's going, what is in it.
Actually, that's a misstatement of fact. You don't have public hearings on contracts, number one, you have public hearings on things like road closures that are entirely separate, there's no statutory authority for a public hearing on a contract. Second, this is just the management, it's not the merger, that was just made exceedingly clear. Um, and so, this is just to get the funds unlocked, so that we can meet our obligations with Wolf Speed. I personally don't wanna be sued, I would like to unlock the funds and proceed forward with the building and plant. I wanna thank Attorney Hagerman, your law firm, for being our advocate in this process, your reputation, and your firm's reputation precedes you. And I do, uh, appreciate your involvement in this case.
So, what I heard you just say was, you want citizens to know what's going on?
No, I didn't say that, this is a management agreement.
They absolutely need to be part of that, absolutely.
Down the road, there'd be plenty of time for public comment. There's still not any statutory authority for a public hearing, there's plenty of time for public comment, there's plenty of time for the new board members who are coming on to be acclimated and educated and get up to speed on this issue, this is just a, this is just a management.
No one that I've spoken with that said they were against Sauer City getting seventy-five million dollars.
That's right.
So, I'm not, I mean, I don't understand what the issue is.
You're misclassifying it, Mr. Mayor, you're intentionally misclassifying it.
I take issue there, I'm not mistaking anything, and that would, that's your opinion, and I'll have my.
Been doing this for a year, I'm tired of it.
I didn't hear what Sandy said.
He said, I have spoken with several people, no one said they're against getting the seventy-five million dollars. I, I think if you stand on the street, oh, that people won't be against getting seventy-five million dollars, if they are. I don't understand that, but no one has spoken against that.
The board can do what they want to, but I think we're making a misstep by not, not getting input from the citizens. That's what we've always tried to do on that, be open, be transparent, I reckon that doesn't count here, so we're gonna do what you want to.
I'll make a motion to be adopt a resolution approving the operation and agency agreement between the city of Sanford, town of Sauer City, regarding Sauer City wastewater treatment facility.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Yeah, all of them favor signify, signify by raising your hand. All of those opposed like sign, motion carries. All right, manager's report.
Well, I approved the resolution, and we approved the agreement.
Stay resolved.
I, 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 according to the law, the resolution can approve in the agreement.
It says approve the operation agency agreement, that's how it's written in this package.
I'll make, just to make sure we got it, we got it.
Do you want, do you, do you want to read that back?
Got the resolution.
Can you read the motion back?
Adopt the resolution approving the operation and agency agreement between the city of Sanford, yes, so that is correct. They've adopted the resolution, which approves the agreement.
Uh, I wanna thank the auditor for coming, uh, tonight, the F Y twenty-one auditor, it's been a, a bear, it's all, it's completed. Uh, that goes all the way back from July twenty twenty through June twenty-one. Uh, it's been a project going through three finance directors and, and, and a preceding town manager. Uh, there's been a lot of challenges that we've been working through on a daily basis for those, you know, for the year and a half that, that I've been here and, and before that, working uh, software, uh, migration issues, issues with bank reconciliations not being complete. Important thing is, finance department as a team has come together and we've gotten to job done. And in the background, considerable work has been done on the F Y point two audit, uh, and beyond that with reconciliation work, and making sure that the record keeping that was done in the past is approved upon it. Uh, the board has already taken significant steps with the reorganization, um, um, close to a year ago, the finance department, so many of the issues that we're seeing uh, in the twenty-one audit as time goes on are being rectified. Uh, so as, as we move forward, these audits will get done at a faster clip, and, and will also show, uh, improved financial performance for the town, uh, and it's there. Um, uh, with that, um, best wishes for everybody, your Thanksgiving holidays.
County attorney? Anybody comments?
I'd like to thank our home board members for their service to this town.
Yeah.
I'd like to say that the fire department did a great job Saturday, the rain, all the trucks, it was phenomenal. And see all the chicken boxes, but not.
Yes.
Uh, status of this reservoir.
Yes. Yes.
It, um, it's just a little over twelve feet down, um, so you don't get enough rain tomorrow, then you probably go in. Men for the water restrictions.
Uh, I think I noticed on your, uh, message, we're getting half a million from Chatham.
That's correct.
Is that all we can get?
That's, that's what I'm aware of right now. It is currently that I wouldn't get, because they're, they're, you know, the water restrictions. They're getting ready to do water restrictions, well, that's all we can get.
Oh, that's all we can get, okay, so it's got nothing to do with the line?
No.
Okay.
Just what's available.
All right, if we go on mandatory, we want to make sure the meter readers are right. I mean, there's no way you can penalize somebody if the the readings are all over the board, you have to cut back ten percent, you know? So, I've had mine misread before. Never, I won't get a penalty, it may not be.
Did you, have to keep about a update on, uh, the one, the AMI meters?
Yeah, uh, we have a speed of over eighteen hundred meters, AMI meters, um, we have another shipment coming in in November, December of another, I wanna say thirteen hundred meters, so we have, uh, tuning around, starting to test them through the sailor communication, talking back with the, a Clara. Um, so hopefully everything starts good, they have to do a mass deployment in January, and it should take three months until completion. And that all needs to change up, I mean, all, after they are changed up, and they have a onboarded of all the software and staff will be trained and we'll move forward.
I know that's not an immediate fix, but that's gonna significantly.
I, I just don't wanna penalize somebody and it'd be wrong.
And we'll always handle that on a case by case basis.
That's all I got, too.
Anything else, friend, bud? No? No, that was safe, we'll be in, uh.